Those are the magic words to get it started. Welcome, everyone. It's Monday, September 11th, 2023. It's time for our regularly scheduled city council meeting. Clerk certify the meeting notice?
This meeting has been noticed in accordance with Idaho Code 74-204.
Call a roll, please.
Councilmember Heller.
President.
Councilmember Jorgensen.
Here.
Councilmember Page.
Here.
Thank you. Before we go to the Pledge of Allegiance, I just want to acknowledge what happened 22 years ago today. The country went through quite a crisis. We lost just under 3,000 of our citizens. Hundreds of those were firefighters, police officers, EMS officers that were headed toward the towers. And it's a grim reminder for all of us, I think, that are I think most everybody in here is old enough to remember what you were doing and, and anyway, I just didn't want to ignore that tonight. And I wanted to say a word just before the Pledge of Allegiance. I'm grateful for the nation we live in. We have our spats, but we're the greatest nation on earth. And when it really gets tough, as we witnessed 22 years ago, we come together and and go on. So, thank you. If you would stand and join me in the pledge allegiance. Next item changes to the agenda. Seeing none, we'll move to the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I would move to approve the consent agenda.
Second. A motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carriers. Next item, item F. It's Constitution Week. I have a proclamation to read. Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties embodies the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to rule by law. And whereas September 17, 2023 marks the 236th anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorial pardon me, memorial anniversary into the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate it. And whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17 through 23 as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I, John G. Evans, by the authority vested in me as mayor of City of Garden City, Idaho, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17 through 23 as Constitution Week and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties. Witness whereof, I herein to set my hand and cause the Seattle City Garden City to be affixed this 11th day of September in the year of our Lord 2023. We'll do a quick pause. We got to get a picture. At least, are you taking, are you taking? Hey, we'll move to items G. Extension request for DSR FY 2022-0013. This is for the cellular seller. I'm sorry. We're not doing cellulars right now. Thanks. Seller 45, a new multifamily mixed-use construction development at 506-510 East 44th Street and 515 East 45th Street. So who's here representing? Yes. Welcome, if you would, give your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name's Brad Nichols.
And an address?
An address would be One Letterman Drive, San Francisco, California.
Okay.
94129.
Welcome, Mr. Nichols.
Thank you.
For yours.
So we, we got, we got a preliminary approval or a conditional approval, I would say, for this project in August of 2022. We have since had a challenging time capitalizing the project. Construction finance markets have moved on us. So we are just looking to extend those existing approvals one more year. Try and turn this into an actionable project sometime in early 2024.
Okay. Questions, counsel? Okay. Thank you. Ms. Thorbrow, do you have anything to add?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. I do have something to add. Typically on extensions, you see those on the consent agenda. And a fellow council member had requested if there were any changes to code that affect the application, that those be on the regular agenda. And that's where it's placed tonight. The reason for that is the city council passed ordinance 103422, parking ordinance. And that would change the analysis associated with this application. At each of your seats on the dais, there is page 30 of the ordinance 103422, as well as the applicant's parking analysis under current code and what the application was approved under. One thing I would like to note is that I believe that current code would allow for the city council to approve this under 103422's eight. The section of code, if you, just a section, second, 84D6D, which is under the equivalent parking adjustments, provided that you make those findings on page 30 that's provided for you via the current ordinance. And I would like to note that this application, when it originally came through, did provide a parking analysis for the parking that was provided in the application. And they found that a reduction in parking would be appropriate at this location because of the mixed-use nature. So you have a residential, you have 360 residences sharing the same structures, there are two structures, with commercial properties. And because of the density is another reason that that study found that there would be some balancing allowed for the guest parking and the commercial parking to be adequately met. This is also directly on the green belt. It ends at the terminus of, it's touching both 44th and 45th Street, but it's terminating at the green belt. And the applicant had also been working with Valley Regional Transit with the, the micro modal trips as well as they, they did provide the, the design and their traffic engineers, institutional investors and lenders all reviewed the application. And the application was completed by Keller and Associates, which does a lot of traffic engineer review for transportation agencies, not just applicants. And so the difference, current code would require 528 spaces where they have 479 that were approved and continue to be proposed. They're not proposing changing their structures or their site layout, which would be a deficiency of 49 spaces. And so for tonight, they haven't specifically prepared. Nor did staff ask them to prepare a new analysis. But they do have a, a parking analysis in their original application. And, and one other thing I would like to point out. There is some confusion in that there was a staff report misplaced in the, in the applicant in this application. And so there was reference to design review fiscal year 2014 in a staff report in the application documents. This is design review fiscal year 2013 for seller 45, to clear up any confusion that may be out there.
Any questions to staff? So it remains in compliance with the original approval? The rest, an extension of the original approval?
Um, Mayor, yes, thank you.
And you've listed A through F as mitigating or findings for parking adjustment, and that would be under the new code?
Um, Mayor, that is correct. What's printed out is 84D6D1 and then A through F are the findings that council, under current code, would be required to find.
Okay. So the, the options for the council are, is it your advice that the council consider these findings because there's a new code in place or?
Um, Mayor, yes, I, I think that would be appropriate.
Okay.
And that the extension code does note that applications need to be compliant with current code.
Okay. Okay, so council, if you would, take a minute to review the required findings. Mr. Nichols, you're, you're available if we need to have a question. Okay. Okay. So I'm, I'm Mr. 20 questions tonight. Sorry, everybody. So finding A, that looks like that would reference the parking study that was done?
Um, Mayor, I believe so. Correct.
And B would also be included in the parking study. It was important to me that you identified who did the parking study. It wasn't the applicant. It was a third party that does parking studies. Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
May I ask, Mr.?
Sure.
Mr. Burrow, on page 29 of the packet. The first the, the first explanation under affirming is confusing to me.
Um, Mayor, Councilmember Jorgensen, I, I would concur. That does not look like it pertains to this particular application. I would suggest if you affirm this application or the, the extension that the reasons identified both by Mr. Nichols and within the accompanying staff report in the packet noting good cause, including changes in capital markets and design delays affecting cost would be more appropriate.
Hey, good catch. Yes.
May I ask?
Sure. Ms. Thorbrow, on page, on page 30, under item three, there's, there's not been change in the neighborhood plans or policies that affect the compatibility of the project. Are we, are we to presume that your office recommends approval of, of the project without applying the changes in code regarding the number of spaces without regard to these items under D in, in your handout?
Um, Mayor, Councilmember Heller, correct. The Development Services Department does suggest that in that the application originally did submit that parking analysis, that it could be reviewed for compliance under the current code equivalent adjustments and that is allowed under current code for a reduction.
And, and those adjustments are, if I may, and those adjustments are, I don't, I don't want to say approved, but recommended by the Parking Review Service?
Um, Mayor, Councilmember Heller, in that it was approved in, in the format that it was with those reductions. Staff sees no issue with the, the parking, however, there is the new code and there was the, the the ordinance increase of codes. Staff does want to point out that this application does have some special circumstances, including being a mixed-use project. It is probably the biggest in that there's some co-use of the, the parking spaces as well as the other items that were noted, the adjacency to the green belt, the intended density of, of the project and the urban nature of the project, et cetera, that were spelled out in that original parking analysis.
And, and I understand that. And so I'm concluding that your, your department has no objection to that situation.
Um, Mayor, Councilmember Heller, correct. And the Development Services Department has no objection.
Okay. Other questions to staff?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
If I may ask a question of Mr. Rodham's. Mr. Rodham's, in, we certainly knew that we would likely be faced with decisions of applicants coming in from the prior code. And, and we would be likely trying to apply the new code. Legally, what is your advice?
Well, Mayor and Councilmember Jorgensen, you have the, the standards that are in the Garden City Code, specifically if there's good cause, so on and so forth. Difficulty from a just let me get to it. Difficulty is the, the stack findings, finding number two, the application and/or applicable city regulations have not changed. Well, but they have, they have changed, so I don't know how to I don't know how to address that because clearly the, the city regulations have changed. So Ms. Thorbrow has a way to work, a workaround on that. But I, I don't think there's any dispute that code has changed regarding parking. And so, and I'm also a little unclear. So would the approval be, and just maybe I'm the only one that's confused, but would the approval be then for, let me get it right here, 528 stalls or previously approved 479 stalls?
479.
The, the amount of stalls, bicycle and vehicle that were previously approved. Okay.
And Mayor, if I may, to respond to the city attorney's question, staff is suggesting that the compliance with current code would be compliance with the equivalent parking standards of current code at 84D6. And then if, if council is able to make affirmative findings for all of D1, so A through F.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question for Mr. Waters also. So Ms. Waters, in your legal opinion, on page 30 of the handouts, do you have those with you?
I do.
So D sub one, there's A through F required findings. Is this a, is this a balance of findings or kind of totalitarian circumstances? Or is it, are each of these a required finding? I, I, I'm really, you know, jamming up a bit on finding C.
Right.
That's a, that's a tough finding to make.
Well, Mayor and Council President, the first, I, I wasn't asked to look at this before right now. So I'm looking at it right now. Yeah, I don't know. It seems like it's overly complicated to me. It's just whether, whether those standards are met and then if they are met, they should get it, they should get an extension based on what was previously.
Mr. Mayor. Yes. May I follow up on Council President Page's remark? So ju- just to, just to be clear, conditions 1A through F need to be met, need to all right.
If Mayor and Councilmember Heller, just for the record, the way I read it, it's A, B, C, D, E, and F, not or F. I think it's A, B, C, D, E, and F.
Yeah. I think Councilmember Page, my read is if you accept the parking study that was done, it reviewed all of these things. So I think the question that's, it's really boiling down to, you're going to allow the parking study that was done in the previous, in the approved application that is being asked to be extended, if you're going to continue to accept that. Because it embodies, embodies these other things and I think the cure for the issue of the, of the code not changing is that, yeah, the code did change. But the new code provides for a parking adjustment. And the parking adjustment basis is the parking study that has already been performed on the project by a qualified third party. So that's, that's the way. I don't get to vote, but that's the way I look at it. So I'm not sure that you, you need to try to analyze these because there's, the information before you is the already or the previously approved project. And the, the key to that is the parking study when it relates to parking. And that's the issue we're talking about. So that's, that's where.
So Mr. Mayor, this is a point of order. If that's what the council believes, that I think what you just said should be in the decision. And that, you know, that the parking study satisfies D1, A through F. And, and we should just put it right in the decision document.
That's, that's what I was trying to get at. And I, I'm glad you clarified that, Charles. Thank you.
My pleasure.
And for the questions, just staff? Okay. Mr. Nichols, you have anything to add to the discussion? Are we?
Not specifically, but I'm happy to address questions if there are any that haven't been answered.
Okay. I'm presuming that your opinion is the parking study that's been done is still valid.
That is our opinion.
Okay.
Which is why we didn't, we didn't go back and revisit it. The new code is, is, I, I would say we read the, the, the new code to afford the same opportunity to make exceptions to the code, the underlying code parking requirement. And us, our architect of record and our third-party engineer Keller and Associates, who performed the actual traffic impact study and the parking studies, have informed us that the, the new code is not any more onerous with respect to total count. So the total count or planning application has not changed.
Okay. Thank you. Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Sorry.
No, go ahead.
Maybe are, are we going to deliver this as a council?
Yeah, that's properly before the council now.
So President of the Council, fellow council member and mayor, Mr. Mayor, my question lies in my opinion first is that this should be, the extension should be granted under the, the existing code that it was approved. But my question and concern is, as we've seen, many of these applications have continued to come in for further extensions. And although I'm willing to agree to approving it for a one-year extension under the original code, what is our, how do we control that moving forwards? So for instance, in any application that was previously approved, they come for an extension, we approve that through 24. In 24, when they come, if, if an applicant comes in for an extension that predates the, the code that was amended in 22, when, when do we say practically this is, it will break? For instance, do we, in my opinion, any year from now, the neighborhood will change. There, nothing is staying the same. So I believe that there will be hooks within the new code that would indicate we're not going to allow extensions under the prior code, even though it was originally approved that way. Is there a way or, or do we handle it one-off as they come through with the analysis for each applicant? Or is there a way that we can, under statute, say applicants after this date must follow the current code?
Well, if I can just respond, I think, I think your question is answered in the findings that we have here. Because if you've got an original approval, me, I've already said, the traffic study is the key to this. So we don't get third-party traffic studies on very many applications. Of one of the size we did. And it's, it's detailed and makes allowances that make it consistent with the current code. And to me, that's the key, not approving it under the basis of the old code, but the analysis brings it into compliance with our current code. So if you grant the extension, you're granting it under the new code. You're not granting it under the old code. So a year from now, if this application came back a year from now, you'd have to rely on your decision tonight to see if there were changes that would impact the reliance that you're placing on the traffic study. And if things in the neighborhood have changed or the area have changed, maybe you need another traffic study before you'll consider this. I don't know. That's a decision that would come then. For others, other applicants, they'd have to meet the same standard under our current code, which is these things and, and it'd be pretty hard to It'd be pretty hard to. Be pretty hard to apply this to other applications if there hasn't been a third-party. Traffic study by a qualified vendor, in my opinion. I think that's, that's the key. Keller's a reputable firm. They don't have outcome-based studies. They do the study. It is what it is.
So Mr. Mayor, that becomes a standard going forward. If the situation occurs again, that an independent traffic study is, is the hinge parking study, parking study. Thank you.
Well, well, in my opinion, to meet the parking adjustment standard in the new code. If they can figure out a way to do it without a parking study, I don't know what it would be. So I'm not just going to say that's the only thing they can do, but, but, because I don't know that.
Right, right.
You know. Ask my wife, there's lots of things I don't know. So. Anyway, but for this application. The third-party parking study by a qualified vendor. Satisfies our current code. I would not suggest that you approve anything under our old code. And I would suggest you approve it under our new code, and this is the compliance issue. And to, and to cure the, the issue that Councilmember Jorgensen brought up. You do recognize that the code has changed, but you also recognize that the new code. That the, the extension request can go forward if that's what you should choose to do. Because the new code provides a parking adjustment component in the new code. So again, you're, you would be approving it under the new code. Just, just don't approve anything under a code that's not current. This is my suggestion.
Mr. Uh, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Just to continue with the discussion, you know, I, I think it's important that we. You know, separate the, the application before us with the policy argument that, that we have, although it is a very real argument. And. You know, I'm, I'm hearing that precedent might, might be established by this going forward. That a third-party. Non-biased study might be. Persuasive to the council and the required findings. But from the mayor's mouth, there might be other things that could be persuasive. Is that correct?
Uh, ye- yes, I mean. I don't know what it'd be, but, 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 but there, but there could be. I, I, I think the precedent that the council would be setting tonight is you have to comply with our current code. That's the precedent. And the code we approved has a parking construct, parking adjustment component to it. And you have to comply with that. And you can't, you either can to the satisfaction of the council or you can't. So. I, I don't, I don't see a precedent issue in this discussion, really. The, the precedent, if you want to call it that, is you've got to comply with the current code. And that's what's, that's what's been presented here. And you accept the parking adjustment compliance in our, or opportunity in our current code. As being satisfied by the parking study or you don't. And if you do. Then you grant the extension under the current code. If, if you don't, then you, you need to articulate why. It's just like any other application we deal with. That's my opinion.
Councilmember Hillary, you look like you have something to say.
No, I, I think I've, I've spoken enough. Mr. Mayor, but. But the application. We're still looking at the application's original numbers for parking. And so the question is, does the new requirement for parking. Necessitate. An examination of circumstances? If I understand your comments about the adjustment section of, of the code. So we're not pinning down any future developers' obligation to do. A new traffic study, a traffic study done for the original numbers, even though they may predate this code. Sounds to me as if it would suffice. But we're still looking at the, the numbers that were originally posted in the application.
That, that's, that's correct. And to get to Councilmember Jorgensen's point. Maybe traffic study is two or three years old or something you, you want to take a hard look at. But the first go-around here is still pretty fresh.
Yeah.
So.
I think that makes, I think what you just said makes a difference.
Yeah, yeah.
The freshness of, of the study and the.
Yeah.
Recency of. Of, of that study. But I see Mr. Waters is. Looking.
I was just curious what the council president was going to say.
The council president's wet behind the ears compared to the mayor's wisdom. I, I have. I came into this with a. Idea of how I wanted to vote. And I'm persuaded by what the mayor says. Insofar that I hadn't even thought of it in that regard. You know, I'm, I'm stuck on required findings of D one, A through F. But it sounds that, that we might be able to punt those required findings as being contemplated. As an allowance in the parking study originally provided by a third-party. Keller and Associates.
So I think the initial question to continue deliberation is whether or not you accept the parking study as. Which had to deal essentially with all the, all these items in the parking adjustment standard. If you accept the study, then you make one decision. If you don't, then you do make another decision.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
With regard to DSRFY twenty twenty-two. Dash zero zero one three in the matter of an extension request. I move for approval relying on the. Third-party independent study of Keller and Associates. That allowances provided in the original parking numbers accommodate. Required findings D one, A through F.
I'll second the motion, Mr. Mayor, with footnote, if I may, that your, your comment about the recency.
You've got a motion and a second. Now we're in discussion. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I think, I think your comment about the recency of the traffic study is relevant in this, in this case. And. Gives me confidence. In the, in the motion.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Yes.
Oh, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, President of the Council, so. So the motion does not need to accommodate any adjustments to. The, the language of affirmation as outlined in the packet.
Well, let's go through those.
I think number two is the one she's looking at.
Yeah.
That we talked about.
Well, I think.
Or maybe there's.
I think that this is my question is that I think item one was an error, so that affirmation is incorrect. Correct?
Right.
So that needs to be.
We can agree on that.
Cleaned up. And then item two. This also needs to be modified, correct? Or I'm missing it?
We didn't see them.
Well.
A- and for the record. I, I, again, I want to state that. I believe we should approve the application for extension. I just want to make sure that the documentation is clean also.
Okay.
Because I suspect this, this could have more confusion down the road.
If the council president wanted to just simply amend his motion. Or withdraw it and make a new motion that would include. The affirmation of item one. Being a change in the capital markets. I can't remember the other thing that was brought up. Which. We're all feeling. And then item two. I think you can acknowledge that the code has changed, but that. That change has been addressed in the new code vis a vis the parking adjustment provisions. That have already been discussed.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I would like to amend my motion or add to it the required findings. And conclusions. Referencing in page twenty-nine and thirty through thirty-one of the packet. As to standard number one. This appears to be a scripter's error and, and is not. To be considered with this application. It references an area of the city that's not the project before us. Although. Item number two is with, without a doubt. There have been changes to the city regulation, not only in the design review process, but in our parking code. We rely on the independent parking study and the allowances it provides to. Conform with that. Recognizing the third-party to be industry experts. Item three. No change in the neighborhood plans or policies that affect the com- compatibility of this project. Item four, I would reference the same language as item two. And I do think it's in the city's best interest to grant the extension. I would heartily say that. That's the amended motion.
We'll get to the discussion. Okay, is the second agree with the amendment?
Yes.
Okay, motion's been amended. Discussion.
Mr. Mayor, President of the Council, I believe that the item one in the affirmation. Given the fact that there were scripters' notes that were erroneously included. We should likely replace that in the affirmation acknowledging that there has been significant changes in the capital markets.
Thank you for catching that. I didn't know I mentioned, yeah. So. Amendment number two, we will acknowledge changes in the capital markets, which I think is pretty obvious. To everyone in this room. Replacing the incorrect reference to an area of town. Unrelated to this project.
Agreed. Okay, we've got two amendments. Have you got that, clerk? Okay, is there any further discussion on the motion? Here now the clerk call roll.
Councilmember Heller.
Yes.
Councilmember Jorgensen.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, next item. Next item is a public hearing item, SUBFY. Hey, uh, okay. SUBFY twenty twenty-two dash zero 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 seven, this is Quad Six subdivision. This is a public hearing. Our protocol is to have the applicant present this, the application to the city council. Following that, our staff will make their presentation. Following that, I will open the public hearing. Anyone that wants to testify for or against the project can do so at that time. The applicant will have a final chance to wrap up any rebuttal or any clarifications that are needed. Following the applicant's final opportunity to address the council, we'll close the public hearing and the item will be deliberated. So who's representing Quad Six? Welcome. Pleased to have you here.
Thank you.
You would give us your name and address for the record?
Yeah, absolutely. Jaden Schneider with Bronze Bow, address P O Box eight five two five Boise, Idaho, eight three seven zero seven.
Last name was?
Schneider.
Schneider.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry.
No, not a problem. Yeah, Jaden Schneider. I'm the, the applicant working on behalf of the owners, developers who are here tonight. And I do have a presentation put together for the project. I had sent it to Hannah previously before the Planning and Zoning Commission, but I do have a USB drive as well, just if, if either of those work. Okay, is. Perfect. Okay. Where, where do I? Down here? Perfect, yeah, so Quad Six subdivision.
Well, have you shared the screen?
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I might need help with that one then. I gotta go to the Zoom. Perfect. Okay, thank you. So Quad Six subdivision was originally reviewed and approved in January. We came through council in January of this year and it was officially approved on February ninth, twenty twenty-three. It is originally as eight-lot subdivision with seven townhomes that were connected. And of, and approved with a hammerhead style turnaround on it, and I'll switch to this one right here. This is the original seven-town home layout. There was a, a common space area at the end of the emergency fire turnaround hammerhead portion. After this project was approved, a developer had stepped in on the north of this lot. Just up in the general area past Lot Nine. And asked if they would be, if we'd be willing to work with them in connecting our project to their project. So basically what they proposed to us was if you can extend the hammerhead onto our property. So, so the neighboring developer's property will grant you an easement to do that with the condition with, between the developers. That there will be interconnectivity in the future. It was for our best interest, obviously, because now with the new subdivision. We're allowed extra space, which we're trying to utilize by increasing this to nine attached townhomes. So originally the seven attached townhomes with the hammerhead on the lot to the new nine attached townhomes. With the hammerhead portion connecting to the neighbors parcel. Basically, the, my understanding of what the neighboring developer would like to do is to connect their portion of the hammerhead through to the street. And allow almost like a loop road. The fire department has reviewed it and given their, their general, yes, this seems like it would make sense. The, the projects are completely separate, allowing for the hammerhead and the turnaround to be reviewed and approved as is, just on its own. So if the developer on the north didn't come through with. Just on its own. So if the developer on the north didn't come through with what they would like to do. This lot and this layout that we have proposed tonight would be a standalone project, which would still allow the the. Fire department to have their connections and have everything that they're looking for. There've been a few small changes from the design review that the design review committee had asked for. Um the original layout, basically like I was saying, was the exact same as the twenty six foot wide private drive. The design review committee requested that we add in a hardscape uh four foot wide pathway as opposed to a twenty six foot wide. Pavement section. It would be twenty two foot wide pavement section with a four foot wide. Concrete section to make it look a little bit more delineated as if it were a pathway to give people a place. So that if there were connections for lots three, four, five, some of the interior lots. To be able to walk around the units. So just as a refresher to what the site was going to be originally. There is the private drive on the north side of the lot. Which has the driveways and what we're referring to is the rear sections of the home. And then on the south side of the lot, there's a landscape buffer with a private pathway. Connection throughout the site to allow access to the front yards of what we're proposing here. So the existing uh lot right now is vacant lot. Uh there was a original mobile home on it that's been removed and. Uh the sites uh just uh bear land right now. To the, a little bit to the northeast side of the lot, this is Glad's repair, which is an auto body shop up here and uh we've worked with them and. They've been really great to work with and I appreciate them being na awful neighborly. And then these parcels right here, if you can see my mouse on it, these are the two parcels that are owned by the adjacent developer. Who it has reached out to us and said, can we work together on it? So there's a memorandum of understanding signed by both developers that this is what they would like to do and it's moving forward. There are conditions of approval stating that the easements would need to be in place in order to make this viable. Uh Joe Canning, the city's engineer or the the representative engineer for the city. Uh has put in his staff report that or his report that he would like to see all of those come to fruition before he feels comfortable saying like, yes, this makes sense. So the just to kind of cover everyone on that one, this this is what we're trying to move forward with. The uh units themselves in the configuration that we have here. Has uh seven townhome units on the first block and then three townhome units on the second block. So lots one through seven on this side of the 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 initial side of the site. Has uh six townhomes that have two car garages with the full width garage and then a reduced. Townhome with a one car garage, making it a one bedroom unit based off of. The city's code for what will and will not suffice for multiple bedroom units. And then the same type of thing with the three townhomes connected on the end of the site. So there's a two bedroom unit, a single bedroom unit, and then a two bedroom unit. And basically coming back from the idea that the width requirements here, what we have allows us to uh reduce the. The area for those lots and create a one bedroom and more one car garage unit. Uh generally, the architectural plans, we've been working with the design review committee to try to come up with something that uh they liked. They've they've given their comments and we've been working hard to try to meet their comments. They generally have said that the site. Looks good and they like the architectural side of it. Uh these are the three bedroom units, the east and the west elevation, giving just some general floor plans and and first, second and third story units. This would be the seven townhome unit with all the attached product. Trying to add lots of fenestration and and variation between the units themselves, so that it doesn't look just like a wall of. Homes that are connected and and something just stucco the entire way. So there's some variation for what we have based off of. Uh adding stone or uh the the stucco and the actual uh wood framing or the the uh the lap framing on it. There's a few conditions that uh we are requesting and basically the same type of conditions and waivers that. Uh quad six, the original seven townhome layout had. This is one of them. It's the uh reduced parking uh requirement. We are requesting the exact same as we did in the original seven layout that. The parking be within the driveways of the individual units. So the the lots themselves are set back from the private driveway. With a driveway component. Council had approved that previously and we'd hope that that would carry through to this project as well. Furthermore, we want to talk about open space. There is a condition that for a waiver that we are requesting. Uh one of the conditions that the council or that the city has in their code is that the. Open space, the total open space has to have an area that's over forty feet in either length or width and have a twenty foot. Either length or width, so twenty feet by forty feet minimum. What we have here is actually a reduced, it's sixty one feet long between lots six and seven. And then seventeen feet wide, so it doesn't meet that twenty foot wide. We discussed it with the design review committee. Our original plan was to put together a proposal with nine townhomes that had. All of the units as two bedrooms except for one and one bedroom. And what we decided with design review is that uh it worked better if we increase the one bedroom units or the one car garage units. So that we had two one car garage units and then increase that open space area between the units so that there could be more landscaping. An increase of uh the separation and something that would help us work together in that regard. And then these are just kind of the general conditions that uh we discussed with design review when we were going forward. Uh they specifically requested the cross access uh pedestrian section as we're referring to it. It uh technically is still within the private lane, but it allows for that uh delineation between pavement and concrete. Uh there is a waiver request in the exact same manner as we did in the original layout. That the front yard setback, so this area that's adjacent to Adams Street have a ten foot front yard setback. And the region reason for that setback comes from the fact that the garage setback is immediately adjacent to the street. So typically, the garage setback is a twenty foot setback, if I remember correctly. And since these are orientated uh away from the street, we're requesting that that setback. Allow to be reduced just as we did in the original subdivision. And then uh basically, this is this is the layout that we're proposing with with the landscaping and everything involved in it. So. We feel really confident about the project. We feel like there's some moving parts in regard to the neighbors and to the. Uh developers adjacent to us, but we've received a lot of support and. The neighbors involved with it seem to have been uh very supportive of what we're putting together. And I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Questions, Mister Schneider.
Mister Mayor.
Yes.
Mister Schneider, did you have any public comment? Did I assume you had uh neighborhood meetings and did you have any neighbors turnout? Was there any feedback?
Uh Mister Mayor, uh council member, uh yes, there there were neighbors involved, the uh immediately adjacent neighbors to the northeast who are Glad's repair. Uh and then the neighbors immediately to the south side of the site. Pull it up right here. Uh these neighbors uh both came out and they gave us generally very favorable feedback. And there were no concerns or uh anything that they brought up. Other than there was, there's an existing tree that's immediately on the the property line right there. And so they were just, uh the the neighbor right here basically came out to say, hey, what is the plan with that tree? If you're building a three story home, is it going to be affecting the tree? Uh I believe their comment was uh they would actually prefer to take the tree down. I think it was older and they were worried about it. But generally, the comments that they gave and everyone that showed up to the neighborhood meeting were approving and said that they they liked the subdivision. We haven't received anything. Uh that I'm aware of from uh the public that says that they didn't approve of the subdivision or had any concerns with it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions, Mister Schneider? Hey, thank you. We'll call you back up here in a in a few minutes. Uh now we'll hear from Miss Norbury.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the council. Um Mister Schneider did a very thorough uh job of introducing the requested. Uh changes um to subdivision uh fiscal year twenty twenty two, number seven. Uh located at forty six forty uh North Adams Street. I did want to note or remind the the council that this application was processed as a plan unit development. And in that there is uh still under ten units, that variety of housing requirement that is triggered by the plan unit development. Uh code is not required um just as a note. Um uh Mister Schneider did go through uh. The the different waivers that are requested. Of note, there would be a reduction in one waiver. Um and that's the parking dimension uh waiver that was previously requested as ordinance ten thirty four. Uh twenty two uh does allow for the dimensions that are proposed in this application. Um as he noted, the draft uh their recommended decision document includes. Um some uh conditions from the design review consultants. Uh one that I I don't think that he noted um includes additional articulation or addressing. Lot number one adjacent to the street. Um and those uh recommended uh conditions. Were recommended by the planning and zoning commission on consent uh agenda um at their last meeting. And so the the decision before the council tonight is either to sustain, modify, reject or remand. Uh the planning and zoning commission's recommendation. And with that, it is a public hearing tonight. I did I did want to um note that, although I don't know that we do have any. Uh public that is in present that's present to testify, but um. I will stand for any questions.
Uh questions to staff? Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh with that, we'll open the public hearing on S U B F Y twenty twenty two dash seven. Let the record reflect, no one has signed up to testify uh in the building here. I'm looking online. I don't see any raised hands. Give it just a few seconds here. Case somebody has my computer skills and taking an extra minute. Okay, seeing none, uh let the record reflect that uh no member of the public wished to testify with that uh. Before I close the public hearing, Mister Snyder, do you have any wrap up you want to do?
No, just want to uh thank the council and and city staff. I think that uh we especially Hannah has been working diligently on this project. And I really appreciate, I know she's not here tonight, but I really think that she's an asset to the city and uh has done a lot and to help us with this project. So just thank you for that time.
Great, thank you, Mister Snyder. That'll close the public hearing, uh turn to the council. It's properly before the council.
Mister Mayor.
Yes.
I guess. I'll make a motion and then we'll have discussion. Uh I move to um. Sustain the recommendation or um or decision. Findings of facts, conclusions of uh of law. Provided by the planning and zoning commission. And uh if there's a second, we can have a discussion.
I'll second a motion in a second, now discussion.
Mister Mayor, I just I just wanted to say, I think uh this is a really creative idea to share the um. Spur is up or hammerhead, is that what you're calling it? Um seems like a good use uh and and frankly, I like uh to see. These um. Locky lots um. More more joined up and it gives more of a sense of community, I think, when. When some of those assets are shared, those required assets um and kind of just really kind of opens it up more and it makes it seem more like a community. So uh I was like actually really impressed with that creativity.
Okay, further discussion?
Yes, Mister Mayor, President of the Council, um I also took note of that and. Want to express my congratulations and appreciation that you're willing to work with other developers to open up. And come up with creative solutions for some of the challenges with our small lots. So uh congratulations on that. Um Mister Mayor, President of the Council and Mister Schneider, I would ask, um and I'm. I'm beginning to beat an old drum here. To carefully consider the exterior colors. Adams is beginning to look like. A naval yard driving down, seeing so many gray exteriors and I would really appreciate seeing more. We don't need pinks, purples and oranges, but um it. A separation of all or breaking up all of the gray along Adams that's visible from Adams because uh we've. I work in the worst of them, so I'm, I know what I'm talking about. But yes, yes, President of the Council, I concur and congratulate the developer on. Your willingness to to work within our city and with other developers to be creative and bring this type of. Development or application forward.
Great, thank you. Uh further discussion on the motion? And hearing now the third call roll.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes. Thank you. Congratulations. Next item is resolution eleven fifty five twenty three. This is our um. Contract uh for misdemeanor and infraction prosecution with the Ada County Prosecutor's Office. Think there's information in the packet. Uh are there any questions? Okay, hearing none, what's the pleasure of the council?
Mister Mayor.
Yes.
I move to adopt resolution one one five five dash two three. A resolution approving a joint powers agreement between Ada County, the the Ada County Prosecuting Attorney's Office and the City of Garden City. Relating to prosecution services fiscal year twenty twenty four.
Second.
Got a motion in a second and discussion on the motion. Hearing now the clerk call roll.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh next item, item G four, this is resolution eleven fifty six dash twenty three. A resolution approving an animal sheltering agreement. For fiscal year twenty twenty four between Garden City and the Idaho Humane Society. Council, uh we have uh the draft agreement uh in the packet. Uh. Uh I'm asking you uh. Hopefully asking you to, if you make a motion to approve that uh. You allow uh some, any clarifying uh. Non substantive language for Mister Wadams and I to work out with the humane society if they're, if we if we run into some of those. Those things, but the exhibit A really lays out. Essentially, Garden City will be treated uh and afforded Garden City residents the same. Access to the humane society as uh Boise and Meridian and. And whoever else they contract with the county.
Mister Mayor, may I add to that?
Certainly.
Okay, so uh I have a memo that start because it got a lot of confusing. The page numbers got a little messed up. So just for the record, then I have a memo. Recommending approval was subject to final legal review starting on page one oh nine. The actual uh resolution and the actual agreement then, the actual agreement is starts on page one thirteen as exhibit A. I just wanted to make sure the council did not confuse, get confused. So exhibit A, starting on page one thirteen is the proposed agreement. What's a little confusing is I also attached the Meridian Agreement just so the council could compare. And that's on page one twenty four. So the the Garden City proposed agreements on one thirteen. And the Meridian Agreement by a four comparisons on page one twenty four. Um and so the the page numbers got a little jumbled up, but thank you for that.
Okay, you're quite welcome. Any any further questions?
Yes, Mister Mayor.
Yes.
Uh there there were a couple highlighted questions in the memo. Were those to be answered this evening or is that language that you are requesting latitude in the negotiations?
I think clarification.
Yes, and if Mister Mayor, if I, those things that were highlighted, so I was, I've been emailing uh the Idaho Humane Society representative back and forth. As recent as about uh five forty five this afternoon. And so those highlighted things you can, uh we've we've parroted that out. One of the things was. On page one nineteen of your packet was what's the email address for your clerk treasurer? You've since provided at least live these email address and then I can go to exhibit A. I can just for the record, point that out on page then one twenty three of your packet. Um that is, there were a couple highlighted items. Um and those were just trying to clarify a couple of things. Uh so just for the record, there will be a lost and found program for cats. Um yes, and so that's no longer highlighted. And also uh D there on page one twenty three, holding stray or lost cats in according in accordance with the city's ordinance. That has also been unhighlighted uh in the final version. One thing that we're trying to spare it out is just the insurance requirements and need to get. One thing that we're trying to, uh, spare it out is just the insurance requirements and they need to get Alyssa Libby to make sure that, that what they're asking for be an insurance is something that we can comply with. And so this is a, that's just a clerical thing that will figure out.
Okay, any further questions? Okay. What's the pleasure of the council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
This, um, this issue of cats has been controversial in, in all the time that I've um, had the pleasure of serving, um, Garden City. The, uh, proposed agreement here, I think is, uh, represents um, many of, of the mayor's hours and other staff members. Uh, some creativity, um, in, in arguing, uh, that Garden City residents are also Ada County taxpayers. And, um, and a softening of our relationship with the Idaho Humane Society. And I enthusiastically, uh, support resolution one one five six dash two three uh, to approve an animal sheltering agreement between Garden City and the Idaho Humane Society, allowing for language that is, um, not, not material to the, the meaning of this agreement to be worked out and massaged as, uh, city council sees fit, um, and the city clerk and any other staff members who need to be involved with that decision. And I just want to say thank you.
I would second.
Great. Got a motion in a second. Any discussion on the motion?
Well, just I'll add my thanks to you, Mayor, for
Oh.
your tireless efforts in getting this done.
I think Donna is the one that was not sleeping, so. She, uh, she didn't let me forget. So anyway, and, and I will, I will say that I appreciate, uh, uh, Dr. Rosenthal, uh, and his staff for being willing to look at a hybrid contract, uh, that would work for the unique circumstances we have in Garden City. So.
And thank you, Mr. Wadams also.
So anyway, uh, with that, I've got a motion in a second, uh, no further discussion, uh, clerk call roll.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Motion carries. Inanimately. So it will commence October first and, uh, uh, I think we're off and off and running. Uh, that concludes our business. I'd entertain a motion adjourned.
I so move.
Second, got a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We stand adjourned.